People in the way, you know, complaining, you know, gee, let's put it somewhere. I don't, it's my opinion, right? At that time, somebody said, you know, let's put it over there. It was not studied carefully, you know, it was like an accident. Not part of the permanent facility. And now that I've come into it, and I have people on my side who are developers, if all sadly come to the conclusion, that's not the way to go. It should go the other way. But if we have to provide pictures for the town roads, arrange something. I think what's wrong at the time to make that decision, let's send it over there.
All right.
Can you get back to your question? Yeah. You know, all this is important, and we all agree, you know, we all want to come back and visit us.
Yeah.
For your sake, I know it's been a while now, but, um, I like to suggest a request, man. We get a touch this far.
We feel comfortable with that July 27th date?
Yeah, that's your extension request. And that's all that's before you until.
Okay. Um, was there something also about, you want to discuss the stormwater drainage?
No, that was pretty good, so that we were not interested.
Very good. Okay, you want to make sure of that.
Well, it's easy, we'll take it off.
No.
We went down there.
All right. Are there any questions for the?
Well, Dennis, you prepared the resolution also.
Correct.
We're not jeopardizing ourselves with all the subdivision, or other extension.
No, no, this is similar to those that you've granted.
Why don't you, Dennis, take us through this?
Just as an extension of example, it concerns the Section 5 Local Olympic Board, 2009, in respect of the pursuant subdivision application, Section 17 Block 1, Lots 4 and 36. Whereas a lead pursuant or successors in or assigned apply for a subdivision property to the town of Goshen, receive conditional final approval therefore for a 27 lot subdivision on January 7, 2010. Whereas the applicant petitioned the town board, town of Goshen, for an extension of time to comply with the requirements of said conditional final approval. And whereas the applicant has demonstrated that he's pursued the application with due diligence, now therefore be resolved the pursuant subdivision application. He granted a six-month extension of time, July 27, 2011, in the requirements that you provided for local four.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I understand. I just want to, you might not really want to do this one, but I just want to get familiar with the property again. Wasn't it the property that was set up to be stages at one time? And you had a five, you got five lot approval, or five buildings? First phase was five?
There were three phases. And that's in terms of, you know, they have conditional final approval.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that it's not phased, and again, it might keep coming back with additional extensions. Did you ever build those? Five, that'll put them.
I just think for 2010, yeah, all three phases.
Okay. Just want to make sure it was.
So is this 27 lot subdivision, so it's all three phases? Okay. Great question.
That's perfect.
Can't you ask?
Yeah, my question is, I go back way back when his father, as it saw, his mother came in, under financial malice. I know Mr. Pursun knows that, but I like to wrap this up and get it one way or the other. But I'm not too sure, is there any concern trying to sell it, you can't go do the sale or this?
There's a great number.
Or we just being shuffled around saying, well, we have to look to address this to address. Would you really just try to close the deal?
The resolution of approval has about 47. I'm not being critical, but there's a lot.
I'll just be attentive, you all come back, you know, I just wanted to say that. I asked you, I asked you in December, that's all. Oh, absolutely. I understand, well, I just want to make sure that.
Any other questions? May I, first, may I roll call vote, please?
Aye.
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 Can I have to move it for a second? I don't know.
I moved it.
No problem.
Now, the motion carries, resolution is approved.
Thank you. That was Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
You are, and sometimes I believe that, yeah.
Can I pay that nickel candy by the way?
One that last for a long time.
What, my last one? You did? Really? I bought it by another. I convinced him, it was nothing on the track, and I didn't know where to pick it up. Well, I should have paid for it.
Okay, the next item on the agenda.
What was it?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Scotttown Water District Storage Tank Installation Update. The, I had a meeting on Friday morning with Tam and with our engineering consultant, Sean Hoffman, and Mark Warren and whatnot. And basically, they're starting this thing today. They started the project today. They said they can have it done with very little risk of not having it done by the holiday. We want to get this thing done for Christmas, so people aren't out of water during those days. But they're working on this, remember, the original installation was $33,500. As they started looking at it today, and there's a pipe that goes down inside the well casing with a pump on the end of it. And when they're looking at this more carefully, that gee, this thing is a real danger of rusting off, falling down in there, and then you've got to fish it out, and you've got to get a temporary water supply again, and all these things. So Sean called me today and said, listen, it's probably going to be about $5,000 more dollars, but the better part of valor is to replace that pipe, and may not the pump, but probably the pump. And I said, well, go for it. I did talk to the budget officer. We literally now, after the checks that have come in for this last billing, we're up about $31,000. So we can manage it, but I just want to run it by the board and make sure that you kind of agreed with this. And the only reason why you wouldn't do it later on is because if this thing does break off, or you decide in six months to not replace it, you've got to have a temporary water support, I mean, you know, kind of thing to do it, so.
Don't know.
And it's there now.
Don't move, let's get that button.
All right. So that's the end of that, then. The next item, Dennis, I wonder if you could leave us to this discussion, too. We've gotten back now the return receipt of all the letters that we sent out regarding the being a lead agency and secret review for Orange and Rockland and Timber Trail LLC. And you can see the two stacks that are put together.
Correct. And I thought I had seen also in my correspondence indication, the request from the planning board that they had reviewed it.
They did. If you look, it should be in here.
I don't, yeah, that's my problem.
I got it, I got a copy written November 29th from Mr. Golden, you want to see it?
I don't see it.
Not in the package, I brought this from home.
Oh, okay, I've seen it, I may have had my office in, I have seen it, yeah.
Have you seen it?
If I would, yeah, if I could, it would be made sure. Exactly.
Should be in here, though, I should think.
Yeah, that would be, the fact, that's more important than the notification.
Right.
Just so that you're aware, this is from our planning board attorney, Mr. Golden, and I think the board is.
Yeah, it's in the package.
In that one.
Okay. It's under Timber Trail, may not be under both of them.
Read my letter.
Yeah, never one.
November 29th.
I have either one.
Six pages from the front, seven feet back.
Yeah, that's right. It's ready, lead agency determination board, Marocan utility, same applicability to the other application of Timber Trail.
Right.
A meeting, a meeting, planning board, November 18, 2010. Planning board knowledge received, and town board's known as intent for this nation to be in pursuit of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, decreed in October 28, 2010, for the Orange and Rockland facilities application, also for the Timber Trail application. This proposal is developed, elected to be utilized in the other one, the pack, developed. The planning board is asked by respective requests of the town board to allow the planning board to serve as lead agency in connection with this application. Planning board believes it is well-equipped and experienced in serving as lead agency in this type of action, and many of the potential environmental impacts involved. With such utility, facility, and/or proposed applications are usually related to site cleaning issues that are overseen by the planning boards in the ordinary course. And a similar letter, as I was just editorializing there for you, was also received from Mr. Golden in connection with Timber Trail, expressing also their request that they be lead agency in that application. I know we've discussed this before, and it's my recommendation that we do, in fact, honor their request, and that this board not act as lead agency, but the planning board act as lead agency for both of those applications. You'll still have the ultimate approval on the pack and any special use, but they would be doing the environmental stuff.
Yeah.
It drives you crazy.
Move on. We read the letter, move on. All right.
I thought I'm on both packs.
I thought I'm on both packs.
I'm on both.
Okay. Now that I feel good about that.
You fired on that, though.
Yes.
Counselor Harry.
All right.
Yeah.
What does the rest of the board feel in this regard?
I think we should, you know.
No, 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 let's start, why would you say that?
Because it's based on what the letters say, they all know it's good, and they deal with these things every day. They have the expertise, the engineers, the attorneys, everybody else, so the building factory is usually in a whole meeting, so.
And also, there will be some duplication also, because in theory, they're going to have the application be able to site clean or whatever, the front itself. And our decision-making is on the grants for the special use.
Now, can you reflect about your conversation with Al Lippman and what his request was?
Yeah, Mr. Lippman, on behalf of Marocan Rockland, didn't necessarily like this procedure. He felt that they'd be incurring too much expense at the planning board level for the environmental study without being, or without knowing, if you will, what this board's position is vis-à-vis the special use permit. Okay, and in Timber Trail's instance, it's vis-à-vis the special, the designation of the pack. And he felt that they may be exposed to greater expense at the planning board level by having go through those studies when this board hadn't taken a position yet.
Called me in the same regard, and I said, well, you know what, when you, if and when you're processing the project, all that money can equalize out.
Correct.
I mean, do it now or do it later?
Yeah.
And if you're really confident you want to build this thing there, then now's the time.
Sorry, sort of. And if you think about it, if it comes to fruition, it'll eliminate the duplication or certainly overlap of any same study.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion, then, that we authorize the town of Goshen planning board to be, become the lead agency for doing the secret reviews for Orange and Rockland, the utility, and the Timber Trail LLC application?
Don't move.
Any discussion?
No, just, I totally discussed that, agreed on that, to be like parallel anyway to planning. Like, I'm in, I'm just a little. Right. And then track, right?
Yeah. I would imagine that during their studies, there'd be a lot more colloquy, if you will, between this board and that board, if you want to keep up the fine current survey on their analyses, what studies are doing, and the type of, to make your decision. They will make a recommendation, yes, if they were.
All of the, all of the costs for all these studies are going to be, I think, it's your responsibility.
Correct. Correct. That's another item, if you follow, they're also set up with the SRO fund, and you can tell me, I'm sure, whereas you folks don't normally deal with those things.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next.
So now, if we do that, for both of them, is that one?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's just the both of them.
Randy's going to see the jet gang.
Exactly what he said.
I know.
Okay, the next item is.
We can't go.
We can't. We hurry up.
Remember that, though.
Yeah, I'm going to try.
You're at 11 o'clock, so I'll be right with you.
Or 12. This next item is, I was talking with Mike Sweetin, who's the supervisor of Wolf, and he has requested that our town board consider engaging a legal firm that they're using along with seven, in total of eight municipalities, to oppose the Orange and Rockland rate increase. And he's got a, there are two documents here. One of them's got, the first one has got the rate increases, you can see the percentage increases for the summer and the winter, based on the amount of power that's being consumed. They're anywhere from 9.78% or 8.39% all the way up to 10.35%. And what Orange and Rockland is doing is proceeding on through the process, where that actually goes, I guess, to Albany, to the board that approves these things. But these are extremely high increases. And so in the next letter, where this fellow named Dan is writing to Mike, you can see the Dan Doffrey, or Dutfray. He supposedly has got some experience in this kind of thing, he's willing to weigh in on this and take a good fight at the, you know, on behalf of the citizens of Goshen and all these other municipalities. And when you look at the services, in fact, you've got a contract to start with, and then statement of client's right, he talks about that, and then he talks about responsibilities. And the last page, page six, is the scope of services to the municipalities that would be participating. And a couple items that I looked at is, in one at the bottom, services will be charged equally, that's amongst all the municipalities, and capped at $3,000 for each municipality. For example, if there are 10 municipalities participating, and the first bill comes in at $15,000, then each would be billed $1,500. Now, there are two municipalities I know of that did not participate in this. The first is Walk Hill, and I'm not sure of the other one, he told me what it was, it might have been Woodbury or something like that. But I did say, I would come to the board and share that this is going on amongst the municipalities in Orange County, and that these other eight municipalities want to make a point that Orange and Rockland, they're asking for too much of a rate increase, and that on behalf of the citizens that we would pull together and represent them through municipal support. So that's the issue. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think it's a good idea, we should, to discover, to affect everybody, everybody in this board and package. But if you look at their application, one of their, one of their reasons is their billing for the proposed building, the power, not only here in Goshen, but of course, various states, it's bar cap. They're in most, they're going to, they're asking for rate increases, something that haven't been built yet, so I'm up for it.
I was just wondering, if the Association of Towns or any of them have weighed in on this thing? Because the broader the base, the cheaper it will be for the municipality to spend. And if he's capping it to $3,000, and let's say only eight of us go in, that's $24,000. What happens if the only $24,000, the $250 an hour, is like, okay, leave it right there? You know, these costs can be, I don't understand the cap thing, I mean, you have legal fees that go, on and on, so where do we get the representation from there on? Do we stop representing it, what, you know? I mean, I just don't understand it enough. But once again, Association of Towns, who individually belongs, or I don't know if they have anyone.
Well, you know, I've not heard of an Association of Towns.
Maybe because the person in Walk Hill, who's the president, who's the vice president.
I don't know, why is Walk Hill not the vice president?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know. When I've gone here, there's two emails from Mike Sweetin, it was, I had a conversation with him, face-to-face conversation, and he was sharing what he and the other eight municipalities are doing. And so I don't know the answers, without that person who's going to be representing us here, those are great questions, but I don't know the answer to that.
I like the fact that we are going against the rate increase at this particular point in this time. I support the project, I just don't know.
Great question. And the other question, if eight towns and one of them, if the other 32 municipalities, I think there's 44 towns and villages, they all reach the balance of the draw, right?
Well, that's why I said the Association of Towns, it should be brought up to them to see what, you know.
Let me do this, based on these two emails, based on the conversation. Turn it down Thursday night, let me talk to Mike Sweetin, find out if there's any additional information he might have, that I can bring to bear on this.
You might want to solicit the Association of Towns, I think they kind of stand over there.
Okay.
And, you know, sure. And I might want to ask you, too, that he really solicits to the other town, sometimes certain municipalities don't talk, and they don't call the other town for something.
I think, I think he emailed, if you look at the email.
Well, he only gave you two names, there should be like 30 towns that, to say, because this.
No, no, I'm looking here at the, all the, all the people who went to. He's got everybody covered in, in Orange County, I do believe.
Well, as we said, the ones that don't respond, they're not.
The ones that didn't, like, we have not responded, you know? I mean, a lot of people just look at this, they're, you know, it's just email. All right, well, let me do this, I'm going to do two, two things. One, I'm going to talk to Mike again, find out some answers to some of those, if there's any more input. Number two, about the Association of Towns and diligence, see what they're doing.
So where's caused, though?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree. Yeah. I'm really on policy.
Okay. Thank you for your input on that. The next item is, would someone like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of work sessions of October 25th and November 8th, 2010?
We do the second.
Pardon?
We do the second.
Sure. Which one do you want to?
I want to abstain from the November 8th one, because I live here.
Okay. Can we, someone make a motion, then, regarding the work session, we accepted the minutes of the work session of October 25th, and the regular meeting of October 28, 2010?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I'm.
Any additions or corrections to the minute?
Well, it's just that I, you know, Phil, I think one, I almost think Phil, he said that, that he wants to abstain from the October 28th and November.
No. Oh, I thought it was just one.
Well, that's what he said. No, I thought you said, I thought it was 26th, 28th. And I was going, I left on the 26th.
Okay, well, let's do it, let's start this whole process.
Yeah, you could do that.
Would someone like to make a motion, then, that we approve the minutes for work session of October 25th, 2010?
I'm over. So move. Sorry.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, the next item is, would someone like to make a motion regarding the minutes of work session, November 8th, 2010, and the regular meeting of October 28, 2010?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any additions or corrections to the minute? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, I abstain.
Motion carries. Just, I've got a seventh item on here that I want to put in, into the, into the regular discussion. We had a meeting at the Walk Hill. Menasink, Warwick, Goshen, and Waywayanda in the county. And we talked about the work that had been done cleaning up so far this year, and they've done a pretty good job, mowing the grass, taking the trees out, et cetera. And then we got into this new part, I guess it's north or west of the bridge?
It's north.
North of the bridge. Okay. And, which is the one where we said, we had requested they have an application, and an engineering review of that before they proceed on, because they want to take down some trees in the flood plain, the floodway. And we responded to that letter and said, well, we're not going to stay in the way of it, but we still believe that you need to have a permit. Well, while we're in the meeting, the meeting broke up, and Tom, the hooky got in his cell phone, a text saying from the DEC, well, come down and mark the trees once the permit's been requested of town of Goshen. Then I heard it, ah, okay, so the request is going to have to come from the county, so on water, to do this work, or the DEC is not going to come down and mark the trees. So I just say that to bring you up to speed, and there's no decision-making or anything else about it, and we'll proceed on from there.
So basically, you're seeing is requiring the.
Well, they're behind the town in our position that one is requested, required, yes. So with that, does anybody else have anything for the regular meeting?
I just want to mention one other thing, I believe, because that's my knowledge, there'll be two other insurance brokers here, proposals, Scott River and Grant County, in Washington City. So you'll get, if they have a total of three other properties, that would give us proposals like you received up today. And then the Marshall and Sterling, who originally wanted to get a proposal for workers' car, that is, would be great to see, but when they went to the other one that built it, which was Pernod. Pernod, basically, I think they could write it, but the cost for the tail coverage was way more than what we were going to, what we had in there. So according to them, there's no other game in town.
Okay. Sounds good to me. I'm glad you looked up.
You know, while we're on insurance, here, I have one other thing. We had discussed, in order to save the Joint Recreation money for a premium for coverage, that may have been unnecessary for them to have their own policy, discussed that, and I think we got feedback from Dixon and Meany that we would be covered, but I would be more comfortable, I had something in writing that said, yeah, you would be covered if they dropped their policies. But it's substantial, and I'm sure the Joint Recreation Commission could use that money more wisely, rather than paying for duplicate insurance. So has anybody heard anything about that?
We have discussed that with a number of different people. That way you turn it off, don't you?
And that's the story. Thanks for that, George.
Here's what Mary Beth Meany told me, in fact, too bad we didn't bring it up before. And I would assume that, that's really a great question, because we should be discussing that with these two other guys who are coming on Thursday as well. But what Mary Beth told me was, okay, that's where you want to go, the liability of all of the joint rec is not factored into the $108,000. If you want to go without a policy for JRC, what you have to do is, all of that stuff has to be factored into it, and then you would be getting a premium that is much higher than what you have today. And she seemed to think that because of the split up, it was better served that they had a different policy.
Wow, that's 180 degrees from what I remember. When we first discussed it with them, the way I understood it is, yes, they're covered because it's a branch, it should be covered by your overall policy as part of the town, period.
Yeah, but they don't have to building and all the ground and all of that, that would never be.
I understand what they're saying, I don't know, you know? If it's not, then you have to find out how much more it would cost us on the regular insurance premium. If the difference is, we pay $4,000 more, and we eliminated a $10,000 or $12,000 policy, and the liability, and the deductible that goes with that policy, if they whacked it for a $7,500 deductible.
Three times?
Three times. Us, JRC, and the village, it's $21,000. So, but I thought we were getting an answer on that. So, but I thought we would be getting an answer on that, so maybe someone can ask.
Oh, yeah, but I'm, I'm, what I just told you is what Mary Beth told me.
Why don't we do the discussion?
Well, now it comes down to dollars.
What if we give, and we say, okay, Mary Beth, put it in print, show us, what it would be if the town picked it up, um, now, Dennis, would it be the town, or would, would the village still have to pick up their share as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, theory, there'd be one policy, uh, each community contributing half of the street.
Right, okay. Because it might, it may very well have some savings, but I do know that deductibles, as Phil was saying, it's $22,500 we've got to pay, which is really unfortunate.
Well, it is unfortunate, you can tell the other people, like, the company of Thursday sent, prepare for that question.
Sure.
First?
Super. Anybody else got anything for the meeting, Steve? Anyone here?
Jerry Boss, W T B Q, uh, in today's Times Health Record, the Cheers and Geers...
Right.
I read an article that, uh, said there seems to be a dispute over the selection of an arbitrator. Is it the town that has the dispute with the picking of the arbitrator, or as it is at the village, or both?
Dennis, you want to...
That's fair to say both, but there would be no agreement that we arrived at, as to how to determine who the arbitrarist for or arbitrarors would be. The village proposed the American Arbitrations Society, or Association, and we proposed the, a local, uh, street resolution.
And the cost between the two...
Yeah, the basis...
Astronomy is different.
What was in the city? Uh, first one, village is the person, city, uh, arbitration, coordination.
I mean, it's strictly one, and our, again, it's speed and cost. One in New York City is going to be much more, the travel is better, if it were...
It doesn't matter.
But anyway, the judge said, if you can't agree, then I'll do it, so we, we, each, each one of us wrote a letter, the judge said, well, here's what we want, but the other side doesn't agree with it, so that's what, uh...
This, uh, O and R, possible litigation, the attorney, do we know anything about him?
I don't.
So I have to assume we will look into him?
You're talking about...
See what his track record is.
Well, I think that the, I'm, I'm going to talk to Mike Sweeten, supervisor Warwick, find out as much information as I can.